We'll call the November 3rd meeting of the City Tax Department, please rise to the microphone, follow my plan to the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alexander, here. Councilmember Brandon, here. Councilmember Brinker, here. Councilmember Conklin, here. Councilmember Missouri, here. Councilmember Stevenson, here. Mayor Long.
Here. For the minutes been the October 20th, regular meeting.
I'm in approval.
I'll second.
Motion for floor a second. Questions or comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes. Public comments or requests from council city taxpayers? Okay. Or B, use of Triangle Park Christmas tree displayed November 23rd to January 3rd.
Ray Andrews and Bethany Mason Lafayette Lodge of Lock Haven are requesting to install a decorated Christmas tree at Triangle Park from November 23rd to January 3rd. The tree will feature weatherproof decorations, natural rated lights, period of install, and improved artwork with public works and the organizers to make sure rules and regulations are in place and everything is safely installed.
Do you have members here, do you guys have more questions?
I'm in approval.
I'll second.
Any questions, Thomas? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other things under public comments or requests?
I am, your honor.
Okay. Unfinished business 5A, consideration of ordinance number 2025, gas 09.
This is the second reading of this ordinance that would repeal chapter 380, Article 10, Regulation of Pedicycles and Non-Motorized Vehicles, and replace it with Article 10, Regulation of Other Vehicles in the Lock Haven City Code, and would regulate e-bikes, e-scooters, skateboards, kick scooters, parking or system mobility devices, bicycles, electric skateboards, electric unicycles, and also give clarification on motorized pedicycle and motorized scooters, which are motorized vehicles under the Pennsylvania traffic.
What's the wish of council?
I'm timid.
I have a second.
Motion for floor and a second. Questions or comments?
I appreciate the update adding that. E-scooter, whatever they're called, yes. It seemed to be very popular.
It's seen a lot of traffic on social media. I would encourage people to please, you know, ask council member or read the ordinance. As usual, many people read the headline and make assumptions or pieces and parts of it. And like any other ordinance, this is written in stone. If we find there's something that doesn't work right, we can always go back and change something to better accommodate. So, but there was a problem that had been complained about numerous times to many council members. So, you know, we wanted to put forth an answer. It may not be the permanent one if we find that it needs to be adjusted, but right now is what we think is best. Any other comments? Call for the votes.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes. 5B, response from Mill Hall Borough.
Mill Hall Borough reviewed council's proposal for the provision of fire service. They did have some comments. Those have been incorporated onto the city's fire advisory board. Chief Woody is here, but some of those proposals will be able to be incorporated. Some we've clarified already with the borough why they are included, and they are presumably okay with that. So, it will come back to council as well as Mill Hall after the fire advisory board gives some clarification.
Chief, would you have any to add?
I don't. I think the, what we sent him as a proposal was too wordy and had, it had non pertinent information. It was like too much unneeded information about how we're dividing the money, how we're doing things. The proposal should be, we'll give you fire protection and services, and this is what it's going to cost you. All that other stuff was just fluff that could be taken in and out. Not everything was, but most of it was totally unneeded for an agreement. It also did is they had paper or kill trees. The, so I, I think, I hope that the new, and since they amended the agreement, that means we should be allowed to also at one of our next meetings. So, we get it in advance and see it after the recommendation from the fire advisory board, and then send it back to them. I see their deadlines by the end of the, to start at the beginning of the year. So, we have enough meetings between now and then. We should be able to accomplish. When do you have a fire advisory board meeting?
Won't be until the summer.
Are you going to call a special one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And that's just an observation on my part.
Sure. Anything else? Yes, sir.
I just got a question. Do we have room to store two engine tankers here in our city bay?
In the city we do, but currently the plan is only to have one of that in Mill Hall.
Just because I'm looking at the bullet, I don't know if that's been addressed yet about not housing one engineer.
I don't have it in front of me, so I can't.
Oh, okay.
Answer.
Okay.
Okay. So, maybe you could let us know.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, 5C, the 2023 A note update.
In 2023, the city of Lock Haven approved going with a debt issuance in the amount of $2.3 million less closing costs, which left you with more than $2.2 million. The borrowing was established to cover the costs associated with the acquisition of two new water wells, the Matts and Quaker Hill well, and the replacement of two bridges in Zindel Park. However, after the city's recent negotiation and settlement with the potentially new public utility commission, the PUC did not provide enough of a rate increase to cover the debt service for this loan. Along with the city's partners at Concord Public Finance and our bond council, at Eckert Siemens, an investigation was done into the potential of transferring the debt from the water fund guaranteed by user fees to the general fund guaranteed by taxes. In 2022, city council enacted a stormwater fee on all properties within the city, which amounts to about $25 per quarter for a residential household. The same fee is charged in municipalities across the state and has been the subject of a case that has gone before the Pennsylvania Supreme Court since 2023. For that reason, the city has not yet collected the fee that implemented, but could have used those funds to pay for the debt service to immediately provide 2.2 million worth of curb sidewalks and gutter improvements throughout the city. However, until the Supreme Court rules on the matter, collection remains strict. The original loan had an interest rate of 4.29%, and just recently on October 10, Concord opened another bid for another client with an interest rate of 4.29%, which means that the rate that the city has is not significantly different than if it went out for bid today on a new loan. For these reasons, the 2023 Series A note was not drawn, any outstanding amount paid in full, and has effectively been closed as of November 1st.
Questions? All right. 5D, consideration to continue work with the Paulino State Forest for joint, or future joint trail studies, excuse me.
Tyler Center Recreation and Conservation Program Specialist with Paulino State Forest, which is a division of PA DCR, reached out because previously the city had worked with the State Forest to come up with a combined trail system study and assessment, and they are beginning that process again and wanted to reach out to city council to ensure that they are still interested in participating. Our main point of contact in person, participant last time was the director of community life, who of course oversees recreation on city facilities. And so, if council is agreeable, we'll continue to work with them to set up meetings and do a combined study.
I'm in approval.
Second.
Motion for then a second. Any questions or comments?
This is, yeah, this is a continuation of the trail system and things that have been started in the past. I mean, I know this has been work that's been ongoing, and I think it's important that it continue and that we really pursue marked appropriate trails.
Right, we have several trails that interconnect with the State Board. That's why they're interested in bringing the city on as a partner.
Sure. Any other questions, comments?
Apparently they're not asking for any funding, right? They're saying, hey, you want to do this, and then if it got to that point, then we can vote again and work out.
Anything else? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Brandon, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes. 5E, notices the Clinton County, Central Clinton County Water Filtration Authority.
Two drafts and one actual letter have been provided to council. The first is the Central Clinton County Water Filtration Authority had sent a letter previously asking the conditions that would need to exist for interconnect agreement and operating agreement for the city's new Quaker Hill and Matts water wells to be accepted by the filtration authority as well as operated by the filtration authority. And so, the items that are on the list are those that were incorporated from not only what the filtration authority itself sent as suggestions, but also the work of the subdivision or subcommittee of city council on water. And so, that outlines that basically the city will own the wells and the water main, ensure groundskeeping is performed, provide regular preventative maintenance on the wells, and enable remote access to the filtration authority to monitor and operate the wells. The filtration authority will of course provide enhancement, authorize the connection, accept the well water for treatment, be the permanent operator of the wells, and determine if or when they will use, operate the wells and mains, perform sampling, pay utility bills, and other operating costs as part of the annual operating budget, and pay an annual flat rate for access to the water from the wells regardless of the amount of water drawn, which will be part of the end of the charge by the city to the filtration authority. In order for the closing to take place on Pennfest, this agreement needs to be in place as well as the transfer of all water assets from the Lock Haven City Authority. So, this is wrapping up some of the open items. So, you can actually clear these on the Pennfest loan for $8.8 million in permanent installation of the wells, the pipeline, and replacement of the pressure reducing valves. Number two, the current way that the city collects is through different provision under the agreement in cost sharing. And for the interim financing for the wells, as well as the emergency water supply, the city took out the 2022 C note. And for permanent financing on the wells that wasn't eligible for Pennfest reimbursement because of the age, that were too old to be included in the new order, the city has carried payments for Northwestern Kish in total amount of $114,955.45 that at its earliest convenience, the filtration authority is requesting to reimburse to the city. Finally, the proposal ongoing is to use a different provision for reimbursement to the city rather than, as you see on the previous letter, their line item provision. This would reduce those down to a single annual charge, which will reimburse the city for the same costs of owning, maintaining, and providing for capital improvements to the untreated water sources that the filtration authority relies on in order to provide treated water to its default customers. The city, of course, being one of those customers, suburban being the others. And so, those are the same items that are currently charged for. The traditional cost sharing agreement and the way that we have requested reimbursement, and this year, and instead for 2026, it is in the city's water fund budget, which has been reviewed that the cost of the raw water would be something built in the annual for reimbursement. Right now, what happens is the city pays to the, pays the cost, pays the filtration authority for those same costs, and then the filtration authority reverses part of that cost back. So, it's this constant loop. So, instead, the city or its future lessee, let's say, would build the filtration authority for the cost of the raw water and waive having been charged and thus being reimbursed for the city's portion. So, it would just be the other bulk customer that would be responsible for paying the city back. So, it eliminates the city making a double payment and then waiting for reimbursement. So, it just is a much smoother way of getting the finances back in place.
Questions? Anyone? Okay. Thank you for the update. 5F, response to DCD regarding the city's home program.
For council's review is the response to DCD. This has been something you've had letters for the last several meetings, but this is the most recent response from the city to DCD about the home program.
Any questions, gentlemen? 5G, London Lock-In Stormwater Interconnection Repair.
The photos, which of course have been provided to the press as well, are a good example of why a stormwater fee would be necessary in the city of Lock Haven. These are the storm pipe that has slabs, which is an interconnection where the city sends its stormwater into a system that is owned by Flemington in part. So, the city owns up to a particular port, and then after that, it's Flemington's bike. The city's portion collapsed, and so, just recently, public works went over into Flemington and repaired our portion of the pipe that had collapsed, which has been something that for the past couple of years Flemington has of course requested. And so, we were finally able to get the project scheduled and repaired to make that safer for the public.
When, when do we expect to do this stormwater management fee and start making this event to prepare?
Quite a guess.
Okay.
Part of the people that make the decision on whether this is a fee or whether this is a tax are running for endorsement on reappointment to the Supreme Court. I would guess after that is when municipalities will likely hear. There's no reason that since 2023, there is no answer, to be perfectly honest, that I know of publicly stated. There have been no more discussions, no more public hearings, and so.
Waiting on the decision to be.
Just waiting on a decision. And the big difference is whether tax exempt entities are required to pay that or not. There is a small chance that the state would say, that the court would say, and I think it's exceptionally small, that the court would say, not only is it a tax, but because it is also not enabled by the local tax enabling act, then no one can collect it. However, that's very unlikely because it is actually in a variety of municipal codes, including the second half class township code as a fee. And so, that would cause a big shakeup in a lot of some substantially sized municipalities.
Sure. Yeah, because even though some places are not attached, they're bigger than the city of Lock Haven. So.
Lancaster has collected it for a decade and done massive improvements with it. And you can actually be someplace like the brewery in Lancaster and through their credit program, they, at one point, when we heard a presentation through the league, were getting a check from the city of Lancaster because they had gone above and beyond with their stormwater infrastructure and were actually able to handle other infrastructure in the surrounding area, and that gave them a credit.
Right.
So, instead of a tax on them or a fee on them, they were getting a rebate.
Right.
So, yeah.
Any other questions? And any other unfinished business?
I am, your honor.
Okay. New business 6A, consideration of requesting downtown Lock Haven to provide proposal bringing downtown Lock Haven into the city's umbrella.
Council's provided the letter that was received via email from the board of directors of downtown Lock Haven, and they are exploring integrating with an existing agency. There is a proposal kind of question list that's attached on the second page. And so, this is brought before council to see if council wants, excuse me, city staff to come up with some responses to this. We don't want to put work into this if it's not the wish of the majority of council. I do know people here are associated with downtown Lock Haven.
Yes. All this work has been done pretty much by the executive board of downtown. The rest of the board was not privy to some of this information, and I do know that the partnership is also asking for a working proposal. So, maybe we need to talk to three groups and let them all sit down and figure out what's best for downtown Lock Haven before you go on a climate energy initiative. The partnership thinks they could absorb them in there. I personally think downtown should be a separate entity. It's a whole different process and projects and everything that happens downtown. So, I'm not against exploring possibilities. Exactly what I said at the partnership meeting also, in downtown meeting, they might have alluded to it, but it wasn't in this amount of detail. So, I didn't know it was as far along.
Is this something that we're talking about without a motion or?
Yeah, we're just, this is not, there's nothing on.
Okay, because I, because I'm reading through this, and I mean, I, I think that downtown Lock Haven has done great work and it's a great organization. I have a tendency to kind of agree with Steve, though, that I do see them as a separate entity. And I think as, I think for us as a governing body, that it could present us with conflicts of interest at some point down the road where people would say, oh, you're doing this for downtown Lock Haven, but what about businesses that are on Hogan Boulevard or whatever, you know, on Bellefonte Avenue? I didn't know. What about businesses that are other places in the city not rated downtown? I think we've had people come to us before and say that they felt like they had been, been perceived as outside because they weren't on Main Street or what have you. And I really, I just feel like we'd be opening this body up to downtown complaints, for lack of a better way of thinking about it, or input that, that is important, but this isn't necessarily something that would, I don't think anybody would fall under the purview of council. I think it would be too, too small of a group. I, I don't know that I think, I, I don't think it's something that we should be presenting. That's, that's my personal opinion.
So, you, so I'm sorry, just want to make sure I'm clear. Alls they're asking for is a, is a proposal for how we would think of going about it. So, you don't even want to do that. And my question then would be, and I'm sure I'm going to make this a bigger question than what your response, but my question then would be to the city staff that would be responsible for that, which is Casey and Abby additionally, and whether they are interested in proposals, in submitting a proposal.
Well, the other part is they're the ones that are requesting, or is their proposal to us. And then let us edit it instead of spending all of our staff time and energy in doing it, and then saying, ah, now we changed our mind. Don't forget, they're just now, the new executive director just starts today or tomorrow. So, he hasn't been given a chance yet to see what, to get his feet wet, to see what, maybe he could continue to run it. They have their own separate budget, and, and their projects, or some of them are pretty much in stone of things that are traditional, but there's always those new things that he could maybe come up with, or, I guess it's sustainability to, we've upped our budget increase the last year or two. I think last year was like five or 10%, which wasn't bad. I mean, we're already contributing a lot of money there. I just don't want, I want to make sure that they know that it's not a free ride, that they can just not have to self have memberships, and they don't have to go get corporate sponsors, that they don't have to do all the fundraising things that they do when they set up best of like accounting or exhibitor booths. I don't want them to become to the point where they just, oh, yeah, give us money and we'll run it. I just don't want to buy that service. I want them to work for, work for downtown Lock Haven. That's what they got to focus on is downtown. And I'm not, I'm not against looking at it. I just think they should have come up with more instead of just throwing it out there. Because I know the partnership is the same thing. But they wanted to sit down and talk about it, but I don't know if they have yet.
Well, I think it's, I, I, I think that, I don't, I hate to put you guys on the spot, but do you mind telling us what you think about doing a?
Sure. Yeah. So, with the, with the proposal, I think their intent is just to get an idea. I think they wanted to sit down with the partnership and us and discuss it, but they wanted something tangible in the forefront to review, so that it wasn't just all talks, and they could talk with their board members and have something written down to compare. I don't think that this is very time consuming. If we're worried about staff time, it's imperative answering questions. We'll do four, five, six, seven questions, which is Casey does that before lunch. So, it's not an issue for us. I think that where we're coming from, we've been liaisons on the board for, for a while now, and we'd like to see the organization be sustainable. I think one of the, the issues with the sustainability is the manager position and the workload that they are expected to upkeep being a one-person staff. Very difficult. We've worked with, with Melissa, we'll work with, with Rick to help them and support them. We've been doing, working on the saw grants, did that for two cycles now, worked here in the past for that. And it's just, we can tell that it's a lot for one person, and if we, we're giving that support anyway, it would be, it would be, it would be nice to have more of an impact on it. And maybe if they held off this year, you go right down the hole and you have that collaboration. I think it's worth working out, but it'll be up to you all in the meantime. Casey, do you want to?
Yeah, I was gonna say that us being the supporting entity doesn't necessarily mean like, you know, maybe there's just an office so they can bounce ideas or, you know, kind of exploring what that means, whether it's, you know, under the city or still separate, but like, we help out a little bit more than we would.
And I will say, there are models to this. There's not, there are, you know, downtown organizations that are in the borough office, or like the city office, and they're under there, and they have like a committee board, committee structure, just like, say, the Marshall Loan Committee is or something like that. So, we're not reinventing wheel anyway, and if we would respond to this proposal, it would be based on those models. It wouldn't be something new that we're drawing off because we need that support as well of like, how do you do this?
And as we've been finding with new managers, we're still a pretty big supportive farm in just the transitional period anyway. So, which has helped me, I guess, that we're here for.
There's this difference in philosophy, too. Some like the exposure of the downtown office There's this difference in philosophy too, some like the exposure of the downtown office being on Main Street so they can walk out and raid into stores. People know where it's at, they can't get in City Hall because we, our policy is that. Yeah, and and then the long term plans that aren't even on here is is insurances, it's it's employees, it's wages. Is the county going to continue to to fund, I think they give ten thousand a year uh towards that. Uh it where is the rest of it's coming, so it's a lot of deeper issues here than just the superficial six or seven budgets. And the uh it's not like we don't have the office space, but it or couldn't make them an office here someplace, but. That rents relatively cheap down there and and then we get into what about the sponsorships, can the city accept? Sponsorships from businesses like they are solic- soliciting now and have in the past. And so there's a lot of other things that need to be sort of looked into to. I think that the. As the only person in this room who was a part of when that all formed, almost thirty years ago. Um I think we need to remember why it came into being. Came into being because they felt that the city, there were certain things the city lacked in that. We couldn't provide from here and they wanted to have something that was about. Downtown Lock Haven and that's how it all started, um I think that um. As far as uh. The blurred line, blurred line's always been there because the name is downtown Lock Haven. I can't tell you how many people already think that we're in charge of it and yell at me for things that happened with downtown Lock Haven. Um so that's going to exist anyway, um I think that there's room. For maybe a little more formalizing of of the roles. Of the, you know, that each entity plays and how that interlinks. I think there, my concern is the the term bringing it under the city's umbrella. And um I think that would hurt them because. I think sometimes they struggle fundraising wise because people think, well, why isn't the city taking care of it? And if they become more than more more people, well, I'm not contributing, this is a city thing, why aren't, it's my taxes paid for this. So that would be my concern, is that that would create more of that expectation. We live in a world now where citizens' expectations are through the roof, they think we should be able to do everything under the sun, but don't you dare raise taxes. And I think that if we are not careful how this happens, whatever it is. We can create more of that, does that make sense? You know, so I, from my standpoint, I'm only one of seven, obviously, I think it it. You know, there is discussion on um you know. What what more resources we might be able to bring to bear to help them accomplish their mission. And their mission certainly does positively or negatively affect the city as a whole, but it's still. Something they created to to deal with um certain aspects. You know, so I hope that makes some sense. Yeah, downtown's not under our purview of expertise. That that office is supposed to help coordinate with all the businesses and put on specials and events and. And do downtown things like the models show, and I think we give them a lot of support financially. We we offer our planner and community life person and they always are at the meetings and they and they're doing the grants, some grants for them. Uh we're we're sending the manager to a seminar, conference, convention thing for training for down for uh Main Street. So we give a lot of support now, I just don't know if we want to be in charge of it down there. I'd rather see it operate and work on its own independently without the city purview over it. And our regulations and us telling them how to do it, even though they'll probably still have a board and all that has to be done. There there's a lot of work to do if you're gonna, and I'm not against talking about it though. And I'm not against, if you want to quickly just answer these few things without a lot of time and effort, I I. I and I agree, we should talk with the partnership too and see what best does happen for Lock Haven, for downtown Lock Haven, what's best for them. You know, it's like raising a child from thirty years ago and now all of a sudden they want to come back home. But they don't have a job or don't have the income, so now they're they're bunking in again. So I I would like to see them stay independent, that's my opinion, with support and help from us. So maybe this is set up as an action item on the agenda, um yes, sir.
Um if we get an uptown Lock Haven, want to get started.
Well, yeah, yeah. Downtown Lock Haven Inc. was a program started at the state level and funded by Grea. That's the thing.
I know, so I'm I'm just playing devil's advocate, what if we get another one to start, I'm just curious what. Under the umbrella, they've asked us questions, I I have got questions, you know, what what do they expect from us? How much do they want from us, do they want a manager from us, how many hours do they want from us? Um how does, how would that look? Um would we want, will we be thinking providing, so make part time to be the manager, are we thinking full time or? Those are questions that I have, um as far as that, what what is the umbrella that they're envisioning? For us, so there's a lot of questions, I I don't know, we have all the answers tonight, but.
I mean, I think if they're under us, we determine those things.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that person probably would work for us and manage that and they, so they're going to lose a lot of. What they do now, unless they're tired and don't want to continue.
I I think that's helping and assisting through grant writing, hopefully getting them to be the main street destination, get that money out. Be a liaison there, it's probably the best bet, but keeping them independent, I know they got challenges. And I mean, it's it's tough, but. But that's what makes that entity uh unique and and special in what it is. The more volunteer you have, the the better um the program's going to be and people buying into that. What is what makes that organization really, really, really.
I think the big thing that they that they struggle with is that they don't have the revenues to pay. The manager well enough to stick around because there's a revolving door. Um hire a manager, they work there for a lot, a little while to get to know people in the community in certain positions. And all of a sudden they're picked off to go work for that place and then we're looking for a new manager for downtown. That's kind of what's been the the stepping stone, if you will, to to a different job. And it's hard for them to get continuity, I think they're looking for trying to find an answer to how they can stop that from happening. And under the current structure, that's. A struggle, um but I would have no, no problems with staff spending time working with them on how. How we can be a bigger part of providing that support. But bringing them under the under an umbrella of the city and making them a city agency, I would be more, do more harm to them than we go.
I don't think it would hurt for staff to answer these questions. Um and because it is asking for a narrative as well, so I think all of these questions that council has brought could be in that narrative. Um and maybe a request for a conversation with the DLH executive board, you, the city staff and. Um any other agencies that they're working with would be an excellent part of that narrative.
Yeah, really, that's all they're asking for, to answer these seven questions and 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 that's exactly the same questions they're asking. The other two entities, well, there might be more than two other entities, or there's at least two other entities that receive these same questions, so. So if that's what they're asking, then I don't want us to get too far along thinking. We're we're voting on on bringing them under our umbrella because we're certainly not doing that.
I think that's, I think that's a result of how the the agenda item is is written. No, that's meant to Greg or whoever, you know, with that part there, but. I think that when I read that, I I'm reading it as though we're saying, yes, let's. Let's talk about bringing you in under the city's umbrella, in other words, the city agency. And I don't see us do, from my standpoint, and I'm hearing from others here, that I don't see that part happening, but. Certainly, um you know, talk, answering the questions to try to find a uh maybe a uh. An alteration in their structure or whatever it is, it can help move them into the next phase of their development. Um I think it's appropriate.
Their words are the potential acquisition of downtown Lock Haven.
Yeah, so that's, so it's not, it's not like you misled us, I wasn't.
No, I was gonna say, it's pretty clear from what they're asking, that's what they're act.
They're asking everybody that.
They're asking everybody that, they're asking us to say.
That our proposal is going to be the one that.
No, I understand, no, I understand that and I respect that, I'm just saying, that is what they're asking, they're asking for us to describe.
For some other entity.
How it would be, how would downtown Lock Haven be brought under your organization's umbrella, that is what this is. This is, how do you plan to continue the mission of downtown Lock Haven Inc.? What is your strategy for financial stability, for sustainability, they they are asking.
And that's what I should get everybody.
Of everyone, but this is just a proposal, yeah, this is.
But the question is in front of us tonight.
Yeah, to give permission to answer the question.
Yes. Yes.
That's what's in front of us, I would move six A.
To have the city staff respond to the questions.
As, yes.
I will second that.
Gonna beat it together a little bit, so, uh Coleman, who?
Council member, yes.
Council member, Brandon, yes.
Council member, Brink, no.
Council member, Conklin.
Yes.
Council member, Missouri, yes.
Council member, Stevenson.
Yes, I think we should talk about it.
Marywold.
Yeah, I think the discussion is okay. Alright, so we'll move on from that, six B. Consideration of Gaye Overmeyer for water and wastewater utilities cost benefit analysis for future improvements.
Several council members attended the Pennsylvania Municipal League Conference at which Overmeyer. Presented uh one of the learning panels and. Several council members after that asked if um we could have a conversation with them about. What they were actually offering, I did have that conversation, so I put that in front of council for its consideration. But they're really offering is a cost benefit analysis for how much the long term cost to our clients and customers will be. For water improvements that are needed, not only at the dams, but the lines, which we do actually know those. Um estimated cost from when we did the hydrology study, which are about seventy five million dollars total in just water improvement. And then um we have not done a study on sewer, but um. They would also do that similar study on sewer, I was speaking with them, we already have a firm that we work with, which is Rapelis. That does the ten year cost study for um water already and we have engaged them. To this coming year um do a sewer rate study after we apply for to the PennVex. For sewer, um to ensure that we're charging enough to pay for that that service. So they actually do that same analysis and they're an organization that you already work with. Um it's easier on the staff because all the information that Overmeyer is about to request, Rapelis already has. And Rapelis has built a model and you did pay um about forty five thousand dollars for that model, which is a perpetual ten year model. That you just type in what our costs are um each year and each of the future year. So um my recommendation to you would be to just um take this information and. And chew on it, but not necessary, I think it's the present time to engage with Overmeyer.
Um we are here. What would you count?
We already have somebody that is doing this, I don't think we need to add additional. People to the man.
Sorry, I'm talking.
Just do nothing at this.
Yeah, just do nothing at this point, if we already have somebody that's doing this information, we don't need to. Add more.
Okay, so this item dies for lack of a motion, unless someone wants to make a motion, but I'm not seeing that. Okay, so we move on. Uh six C, annual playground safety inspection.
You are the fortunate municipality to actually employ a certi- certified playground safety inspector. Which is the director of community life, Casey, and uh so this year. Each of the playgrounds city has was inspected and inspection report completed and those are provided to the city's insurance company. Uh that helps us do our due diligence for what playgrounds uh are insured by. Penn Prime have actually been inspected at least once during the year, um they are reviewed regularly. Um under our CPSI program, but they are fully inspected once a year and then those reports are provided.
Do we do anything with these, like do these reports where we have issues of like compliance of surface stuff, et cetera? Do those things of the public works and they take action on like, okay, just making sure we just didn't, you know, making pretty reports.
No. They've all been put into the hands of people who it is repairable, so repairs will be done.
Um I have a question while we're on the playground subject, um I noticed the sign over at. The park over by Y that we had locked it for the season. Um is it always this early that we've locked it?
No, that actually has to do with the.
I wanted to make sure, I figured as much. Okay.
Yeah, I think there's some.
All right.
Issues on there.
I just wanted to make sure.
That park needs to be reviewed by public boards for cost.
Okay, alright.
And then uh the other public, Hannah. Um had equipment that.
Yeah.
Because of the updates that are going to happen in Hannah, what caused them to continue to remove some of those like. That happened there since I was a youth and they were awfully fun when I was young.
So then if nothing is taken care of at the Tiger Den, does that mean it won't open come spring?
Depends on the car.
Okey dokey.
I just asked the mayor what the year was because I couldn't remember, but I remember I was working at the bar house then. And we used that as base operation to feed everybody and supported that, and she said it was two thousand seven, so that's missing out on your. Report, uh everything there was two thousand seven. And it served its purpose as well, it would only last so long compared to this new metal coated. Things.
And again, all the parks are on a rotating schedule for improvements, which we also um started to make that. To be compliant with the insurance company, uh because the life expectancy of any play equipment. Um is finite, however, it can be. Uh still insured beyond its useful life as long as it continues to be inspected by a certified inspector. Who continues to pass it and find that it meets safety standards, so that's the only way that we get. A playground that's older than ten years to still be insured by Penn Prime is by having Casey do that inspection. And finding that it is still safe or finding that it's sufficient and we are able to fix those deficiencies. And then she would give an update, the insurance company that it's been repaired.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, six D, notice of twenty twenty six fall leaf collection in the city.
It has begun, uh bag leaf pickup and rake leaves, um the rake leaves. Should be placed in the gutter or between the curb and sidewalk, please remember that this. Device that picks up leaves, only picks up leaves, do not try to hide branches in it, that will break the machine, it's very costly when it breaks. The machines were granted to the city by the state, but they are a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars apiece and nothing on them is inexpensive. So when you try to hide things in the leaves, it does cost you, only leaves is what we're picking up now, you can always take your brush. Sticks, anything like that up to the second avenue garage and deposit it there for free. In the dumpster that we have up there during normal business hours, we do accept bag leaves, November third and fourth and seventh and twelfth. Um and the bags should be put at the curbside, they really shouldn't weigh more than fifty pounds because the the public. They really shouldn't weigh more than 50 pounds because the, the public works employees need to lift and open those bags as well. Um, Sunset Pines has its own gates because of its kind of cranked location. And that's November 17, 13th and 19th. All of those are on the city's website. And they have also been advertised in the page.
Does the street sweeper go up to Sunset Pines? I recently had someone ask that.
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Okay. It is in my, it should be listed on that Facebook page, um.
It's, might not have a sweeper night schedule.
We pick up in. On the sweeper, oh.
Yeah, it's like the regular rotation.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I can get back to you though.
Thanks.
Okay, um. Much of Curly Bird, wastewater administration.
Uh, well, um, this is provided thanks to last week and. Uh, to your light, I'm sure, um. This is a budget that will have a surplus right now, estimated at the end of 2026. Fiscal year, a surplus of 326,000 dollars. The sewer fund accounts for not only the city's administration. Which is including the billing of the sewer bills, but also includes. Um, the city's lines that it owns in the ground. And also the wastewater treatment plant, which treats um, for both customers, including Castania, Nidme, uh, Variety Facilities. And so those authorities that are the bulk customers reimburse the city for sensitive overflow towards foster treatment. That's why they're in yellow on the front page. Those have become. Changeable items until we get closer to the actual adoption date, but otherwise, most of the expenditure lines. In the operating budgets are based on our best estimates at present. Um, sewer capital projects does have enough money now. That it can be used as the interim financing for the PennVex loan that you will be doing. In 2026 for the replacement of utilities. Down in the sewer plant, so that will save you about 50,000 dollars and not have to do interim financing for that. And be able to use the fund balance. From capital projects. Municipal surcharge fund, um, that is. A kind of fine, but a fine that can only be used for a specific person, purpose. Each of the municipal entities that we treat sewer for have a cap to the amount per day that they can send in wastewater. So I'm going to use Castania as the example, um, but if Castania were to go over their maximum daily flow, it would be surcharged on that. And so um, during the course of the year, every one of the municipal entities will get some degree of surcharge. These are not significant dollar amounts, however, they 100% have to be used for any capital repairs and improvements. But they can't be used for anything other than when we replace new filters, that money gets used for, towards those surcharges. So um. It is a way to recoup that when costs go above. What was anticipated for your flow, there is a revenue stream to help cover that cost, but the way we use that is to actually pay for. Maintenance and repairs. But again, it looks like at present, there will not be a sewer rate increase and uh. There will be a surplus in the sewer budget.
Anything else under new business? Have the reports below, anyone have any in their committees?
Hey, the library is interviewing their two executive director candidates this week and um. This afternoon, they had a meet and greet that was advertised and they also have one Saturday at noon, I believe. If anyone would like to go meet the executive director candidates that are coming in.
What with council will be Saturday, the 22nd, 9 o'clock, meet at Veterans Park.
Anyone else?
Everybody's so excited.
It's the last day tomorrow. If you haven't voted, please get out and vote. We have candidates.